Recording.
It is Monday, November 7th. The time I have right now is 5:29 PM. And we're going to call this work session to order. The first agenda item are city updates. So Ms. Solano, please take it away.
Thank you, Madam Chair, City Council, and Mayor Gradisar. I'll start the city updates this evening. I have a few. With the COVID update, the one-week cumulative positivity case count has gone up in Pueblo. It's 155.6 for the last week, and the one-week positivity rate is up to 9.2%. The Pueblo County has eight days of stabilized COVID-19 hospitalizations as of the report this afternoon. I'll move over to the Public Works Department. We're going to, let me start with the activity on the team up to clean up on Saturday, October the 29th. It looks like there were 600 cars that came through that Saturday, 54 roll-off dumpsters, 87 tons of trash, 175 K pounds of trash. So a successful cleanup for late October, and probably start to work on the one for next spring anytime soon. Also, though, in Public Works, if you recall, City Council approved a $300,000 budget for cleanup of the rideaways through Public Works out of the ARPA Lost Revenue Governmental Services pot of funds. And there are still pots of, there's still money in that $300,000 fund. So the Public Works has created a pop-up cleanups that will happen throughout the city. The first one will occur this Friday, November the 11th. It's intended to place a dumpster in specified streets and neighborhoods, notifying neighbors through a flyer, and that's the flyer you see on your, on your desk there. This first one will be on Chester and East Beach. These will be in the, in the mailboxes and indoors on a win, on probably Tuesday or Wednesday morning for the cleanup on Friday, the 11th, from 1 until 3, with a note to dump trash that they have in the dumpsters that is available. Each dumpster has a cost of about $400, so there's enough budget in that $300,000 to do this multiple times in different locations throughout the city. The schedule, I think they're working on in Public Works now, and although it won't be, you know, published so far in advance, the community street members will be able to receive the advance notice by a few days in order to ready any of the trash that they'd like to go into the dumpsters. So that's continuing the efforts to clean up the community. That isn't the ARPA funds that are the million dollars. This is the Community Service, Community Lost Revenue Government Services pot of money. Okay, the ARPA update for the evening is now that October is over, Finance has completed cumulative running total balance through October and all of the approved items by City Council, and they've updated it for interest earned and the payroll through end of October, and I'll be sending that out tomorrow and then working with the chair, the work session chair, to determine if we'd like a work session or now for through the third quarter or the start of the third quarter, fourth quarter, or wait until the end of the year for a full 2022, look back at the ARPA funds and the balances remaining going into 2023. So we'd be ready to present at a work session anytime you'd like that added. The City Clerk has asked me to share with you the following update on the redistricting discussions that are going to take place soon. And Marissa is not in this evening, but she has left me several notes. The Election Board and City staff are beginning the process of redistricting, looking at the 2023 election, for the 2023 election. Now that we have updated census data from the government, our GIS team and IT has been working on a few options. They will be presented the options at a public meeting next Tuesday, November the 15th, at 1:00 PM in City Council chambers here with, they've been working with Haley to get out some public releases and some press releases so that they're aware of it both social media and the newspaper. The maps will actually be released early later this week. A written comment is, will be accepted in the, in the City Clerk's office, beginning immediately after the the maps are released and the meeting is held. For some additional info on the process, after the public meeting, the Election Board will meet again to recommend an updated map to City Council to vote on. They hope to bring that to you in December. They can actually do a work session with a presentation if City Council would like, or you can capture the information through email and updates from City Clerk at regular meetings. The Election Board for Awareness is made up right now of a Democrat, a Republican, and the City Clerk, so a three-member Election Board. It will be reviewing the information that is presented in the public hearing. You are all invited to the public hearing next Tuesday from 1 to 3 in the chambers. The updated population data do show that there are some changes that perhaps need to be made in consideration for districts. The City Clerk will follow up next Monday with information when she releases the press releases and the maps, and then she'll also follow up after the meeting next Tuesday. The current Election Board members are Alvin Rivera, Shannon Sullenberger, and then Marissa Stone. So that's the update on redistricting plan. Now I have to go back to my other notes. With respect to this evening, I would like to remind Council that the 2023 proposed budget discussion, before we move on to passing it, we have this evening's discussion that is the last item on the agenda. We are set for the first reading on Monday, November the 14th, and the second reading on Monday, November the 28th. The Charter, to remind everyone, does indicate in Article 7, Part 1 of the Budget, Section 711, provides that the budget should be adopted by the first day of December, along with the appropriation ordinances and the tax levy ordinance. And our new Finance Director has set to go, and those are prepared, depending on the numbers that we come up with final, that Council directs as final numbers for the budget passing later. And that concludes updates. Do you have questions or items for next week's presentation?
Thank you, Ms. Solano, for all those updates. Counselor Flores?
I don't have an update, but I, since the elections tomorrow, I wanted to clarify something. I know that Counselor Winter had a opinion piece, but I wanted to go, I went back to the minutes. I wanted, I wanted to be sure the public understood that our Chief of Police really does not have any authority in establishing a ballot issue. That's done by the City Council. And I wanted to read this because this is really important for the record. On August 22nd, in our minutes, we voted on an ordinance called R9, submitting to the eligible electors of the city of Pueblo, Colorado, at the special municipal election to be held on November 20, November 8, 2022, a question relating to the extension of the 1/5 sales tax rate for five years for police personnel and operating costs and the adoption of Ordinance Number 10260 to implement the extension. That ordinance was passed unanimously, and it was, it was, it was a motion that was provided by Ms. Winter, and I seconded it, and it passed unanimously. So I, I just wanted to put that for the record because I don't think it was fair for you to say that Chief Knoller was aggressively begging for the $4 million in taxes since he has no authority. The seven of us voted unanimously to put that on the ballot, and it's not fair for the public to believe that Chief Knoller in any way was influencing. He did give a good doc, you know, documentation of why he needed the money, but I just want the record to show that, that it is the City Council. If anyone's, anybody wants to blame us for begging, it's the seven of us. And I just want that put in the record because Chief Knoller in no way begged us to do anything. We have the authority. We have our own mind to decide what we want to do. So that's all I have, but I just wanted to clear the record.
Counselor Winter?
Yeah, thank you for bringing that up, Dennis. You know, sure, it was 7-0, but also the municipal utility question on the ballot was 7-0, and I think there were three of us that were against that. So it's just an issue of allowing the public to vote. You know, I mean, if they want to pay more taxes that we, that they don't need to pay, that's up to them. And I suppose it's my opinion, it's an opinion piece, that was a desperately, desperately begging when he doesn't need to be doing that. We have the money to do it.
I have a couple, Ms. Solano. So for the pop-up cleanups, I know that, I recognize that the schedule is not necessarily published yet, but do you know where the next pop-up cleanup will be?
Madam Chair, we do not. The intent was so that a dumpster could be used by the community, so really not going to advertise too far in advance what a schedule looks like, so that those who live in the streets in that neighborhood are able to have a dumpster that is available for the several blocks within the community. So we, I'd be happy to share, and we can make public a couple of days in advance of when, so the intention is pop up and clean up and move on to the next one. Actually, he may know what month, if it's coming another one in November, and he says yes, another one likely to be in November.
Okay, if we have recommendations on places in our district, would, great, thanks, Andrew. For the city redistricting, I would like to have a work session on that. So let's get, just get in the process of scheduling that. Ms. Solano, talk a little bit about ARPA. Would you all like to wait until the next quarter for ARPA work session, or sooner rather than later for an ARPA work session? Indifference? Wait. Counselor Tenzina? Okay. I think that then let's just go ahead and wait for that ARPA presentation and circle back then at the beginning of the next quarter. I did want to note that we don't have necessarily the scheduled work sessions that are upcoming, but I did give you guys off November 21st. So there's no work sessions on November 21st, and that's my Thanksgiving gift to you, all of you. You're welcome. The next agenda item then we have is a rural jumpstart. So can I please have Ms. Van Can to the podium, please? Van Can? Hi, and so, and the mic is in front of you, and if you want to press the button at the, at the bottom. Perfect. Great. Can you all hear me? Cool.
Well, I guess, oh, there it is, never mind. Okay, well, hi, everyone. You can go ahead and go to the next slide if you don't mind. My name is Morgan Van Cat, and I'm here representing the Office of, oh, thank you. Okay, great. Cool. Well, I'm, I'm here representing the Office of Economic Development and International Trade with the state, and I'm here to talk with you all about Rural Jumpstart. So as you can see, I like to show this picture because I tend to get a little passionate about this topic because I'm a product of rural Nebraska, actually, but I'm really excited to be here and talk about how we can hopefully get some more businesses, some help that they need with the program, and hopefully how we can be of assistance to you guys with this program. So for those of you who don't know, Rural Jumpstart started in 2016 as a tax relief program. In 2021, we actually, the state added a grant program, which I think really made the program more beneficial for our rural areas of Colorado. The benefits are for new businesses and new hires that either start or relocate into rural parts of Colorado called Rural Jumpstart Zones. So essentially today, I'll talk a little bit about the benefits of the program. We'll go into some of the rules, and then we'll talk about why I'm here today, which is asking for the city of Pueblo to join the County of Pueblo's Rural Jumpstart Zone. So first of all, let's go through the fun part where we get to the rules. So there are two parts of the Rural Jumpstart Program when it comes to the benefits. The first is the tax portion. So there are three benefits for the tax portion for businesses that join the program, and then one for the employees of these businesses. So when a business is approved into the Rural Jumpstart Program, they receive relief from the state income tax, state sales and use tax, and the county and municipal business personal property tax. I want to be real clear about this, that this is not the property tax. This is business personal property tax. We know how important that property tax is. So just make sure that you know it's relief from business personal property tax. Additionally, qualified employees, which we'll discuss what qualified means on the next slide, they also receive relief from their state income tax. So it's a pretty good benefit for the employees that qualify into this program. So the next is the grant benefits. And one thing I'd like to note, I'm sure you're all aware, but the County of Pueblo is a Tier 1 just-transitioned community, which means that the economy is transitioning away from coal. And because the County of Pueblo is a part of a Tier 1 just-transitioned community, the grant benefits for this program are double than that of a normal economically distressed rural community. So when we talk about the grant benefits of the program, there's two types of grants that are available for businesses that join. The first is a $40,000 general operating matching grant. It's a three-to-one match of general business expenses, and we interpret that as 25%. So it can get a little confusing with the three-to-one, but it's 25%. And what that means is that the business will spend up to $160,000 on any business expenses, whether that be their mortgage, their rent, salaries, equipment. And the state will match that when they turn in receipts in a reimbursement spreadsheet. Will match that up to 25%, up to that $40,000. So it's a really good opportunity for businesses that are either moving into Pueblo or are starting up in Pueblo to get some capital on their hands. The second grant that's available for businesses is a $5,000 per new hire grant. So when we talked about the tax benefits that were for qualified employees, those same qualifications are what it takes for the business to receive this grant. So in order to receive this $5,000 per new hire grant, the employees must have a salary above the county's average annual wage, which we can see in Pueblo is $45,604. The employees must be full-time, working 80% or more of their time in Pueblo County, and they must be employed for at least six months before they receive those grant benefits. So those, those are the two grants that are available for businesses that are a part of the Rural Jumpstart Program. And the grant program does expire as of June 30th, 2024. So that's why I'm here today is because I want to get Pueblo into this program so that we can get this money out as soon as possible. So the not-so-fun part is the requirements. I'll preface this with that the Rural Jumpstart Program focuses on a very targeted type of business. It's not going to be able to help every single business that's in, in the city or the county, but it's targeting a very specific type that's going to be invested in the community for the long haul is what our hopes are. So when we talk about some of the rules, you'll understand why I said that. First of all, the business cannot be operating in Colorado at the time of application. This means that any business that's applying for the program is likely a startup by a citizen in the area or starting up in Pueblo, or they're moving from out of state. The second rule is that the business cannot compete with a similar business within the County of Pueblo or the surrounding counties, which you can see is Lincoln, Crowley, Otero, Los Anamos, Werfen, Ocaster, and Fremont. It's only counties that are designated as rural economically distressed. So El Paso isn't a county that Pueblo would have to compete against, per se. Additionally, the business must export a product or service outside of the zone, which is Pueblo County. And I would just like to say that tourism is considered a service that is exported because you're bringing people into the county. And then finally, the business must agree to hire at least five people over their four years in the program that are at or above that county's average annual wage that we talked about, which is just shy of 45.6. And then the last rule, I always like to say, I don't see it as much as a rule as it is something that's even more beneficial for the community, is that the business must be sponsored into the program by a sponsoring entity. In Pueblo County, you guys are really lucky. You have two. Both are Designated Institutes of Higher Education, and I think we have a CSU Pueblo representative here today to support this program, which is great. So thanks for coming, Chrissy. And then the Community College of Pueblo is another sponsoring entity that has been really vocally supportive of bringing this program into the area. And it also just allows for local partnerships. When I said that we want to support a business coming into the zones that are going to stay around for a while, this is one of the requirements that really enforces our belief that it's important for these businesses to make community partnerships and really focus on how they can stay in Pueblo County for the long run. So I do have some examples, and the one example that I really like to give isn't actually on this list. So we went to, in May, we were really working on broadcasting this program. As I mentioned, the program's going to expire, and we want to get this grant money out as soon as possible, so we've been doing a lot of outreach. And Northeastern Colorado is kind of my little pet project for the year. And we went to Sedgwick County, and they said, you know, we're so small, we're just not sure how we're going to use this program. But they trusted us, and they joined the program, and within one month, we had a gentleman come in that wanted to start a CDL training facility in Sedgwick County, and he is their first business that just got approved into the program in August. And it's going to make a huge benefit for that community specifically. And so this program really has the opportunity to bring in a lot of unique businesses that the community needs and can really be life-changing for this area. So the reason I am here today, becoming a Rural Jumpstart Zone. In order for a county in a city to become a Rural Jumpstart Zone, they have to agree to do so. So this is a list of all the current Rural Jumpstart Zones, and as you can see, Pueblo is a county that's listed on this list. So in February of 2021, the County of Pueblo agreed to become a Rural Jumpstart Zone. But for some reason or another, there was a disconnect, and the city never passed a resolution to join the program as well. There was some turnover in Oette, and I'm not sure if that was maybe part of the reason, but there was just, we need to get the city of Pueblo in the program, not the county is, as long as that is all of yours wish. So that's why we're here today. So when we are asking, and this says impacts on the county, but this is for the city as well. So what, when we are asking the city to agree to become a part of the Pueblo County Rural Jumpstart Zone, we're asking you to provide relief from the municipal business personal property tax only for the new businesses that are joining the Rural Jumpstart Program. This is only for Rural Jumpstart-approved businesses. And I'd like to iterate that the businesses that are joining the program are not operating in Colorado at the time of application. When a business becomes a part of Rural Jumpstart, they are in the program for four years, and they have the availability for one extension, so it's up to eight years. After that period is over, the tax revenue goes back to the county and the city. So you're not losing any tax revenue by joining this program. It's more just delaying it, mostly just for, only for the businesses that are joining the Rural Jumpstart Program. It's not taking anything away from your budget. And I also just want to iterate that this does not affect the local sales and use tax. So no fiscal impact until a business is admitted into the Rural Jumpstart Program. That's another really important thing that I want to make sure that you all are aware of. So how do we get you guys a part of the program? So the first step is that the county commissioners need to pass the resolution, apply, and be approved by the Economic Development Commission. This was done in February of 2021. So next step is getting the municipalities on board, which is why I'm here today. In order to become a part of the program, you would pass a similar resolution saying that you will support the Rural Jumpstart Program and waive that municipal business personal property tax and be approved by the EDC. For municipalities, there's no application necessary. So with that, the application process for businesses really isn't necessary for today. I'll give you a business card with all of my contact information, and with that, I'd welcome any and all questions. It's been such a pleasure to come down here and get to talk to some people in Pueblo the last couple of months, and I'm excited to hear what you guys think.
So thank you, Ms. Van Cat. It sounds like a great program. Excited that you're here. What questions are there from Council? Counselor Graham?
Lana, did you put this resolution or?
President Graham, not without your direction. So we're waiting for tonight's presentation and then pass to ask a city attorney to help for a resolution.
I'd like to see this.
Yes, I, yes, I think so as well. We're all in agreement for that. Yeah, definitely one of the easiest decisions, for sure. Good to hear. Other questions, Counselor Flores?
It seems to me the difficult thing is finding someone that's in the process of thinking about creating a business, and that's difficult for me because where, where's the assistance for that? Is that something that, that there's some help with? Or are we to go out and find these people that want to go into business? Seems like that's the difficult thing, and obviously you've had some successes, so it's, it's not early you can't overcome. But once we pass this resolution, how are other counties doing it? Are they, are they advertising it? Are they indicating that this is available if you're a new venture?
Yeah, thank you for your question, Councilman. What I have seen in this program so far is that the counties that have the most success are the counties that are utilizing their economic development organizations and their institutes of higher education. The more partnership the communities have is the more successful that this has been. One example that I can give is Mesa County has been extremely active in this program, and they have an amazing relationship between CMU and the Grand Junction Economic Partnership. The next step that I plan to take upon hopefully getting a resolution from you all to join is working with PEDCO and making more connections. However, I will say we've been working a lot with Chrissy Holiday from CSU Pueblo and also Amanda Coram, who is the Executive Director of the Corporate College at PCC. And I think both of them have amazing connections already. And we will be leaning hard on our sponsoring entities to develop more connections, and I definitely hope to come back to Pueblo to help you guys out every once in a while. But most of the responsibility will be on the sponsoring entities, but we will definitely help in making those community connections.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments? How long does it take for reimbursement?
We allow, so for the new hire grants, we have an annual, or an annual payout, but with the operating grants, I get to do that on my own time, fortunately, which gives us a lot more flexibility. I think that the state requires a 90-day turnaround, but I try to get it done much faster than that. It just depends on how much back and forth we have.
Okay, and then since the county has opted in for a couple of years now, are there any businesses that are success stories in Pueblo County right now with this program?
So one reason why I'm here today is because businesses that are located in a municipality that have not joined the program, they cannot apply for the program. So it can only be businesses that are in unincorporated parts of Pueblo County, and so we haven't received any interest. But as you all know here, Pueblo is really in a right position to take advantage of this program because you are a regional hub for the area, and so we're really hoping that upon getting the city of Pueblo to join the program, that will get a lot more traction.
Right. Well, I think we're moving forward with the resolution on Monday, and I'm expected it'll, I expect it'll pass. So thank you, Mr. Ms. Van Cat for that presentation.
Thank you, and if it's okay, I'll pass out some business cards if you have any questions, but thank you all for your time.
Sounds good. Thank you. Ms. Solano?
I'm not certain that it'll, it'll appear on the November 14th agenda. The resolution likely will be November 28th.
Okay. November 28th? Did you hear that, Morgan? Okay, yeah. Okay, moving right along on our agenda is VUBA, BUBA, BUBA, Driveless Transportation Systems. So can I have Mr. Muller to the podium, please? And then if you wouldn't mind stating your name for the record. On the base, the button on the base.
I'm Paul Klein.
And whenever you guys are ready. BUBA. BUBA.
BUBA. So, good evening, ladies and gentlemen. I have a full disclosure to make. When I was a kid, my dad was the mayor of our small town, and I have never been to a City Council meeting ever, and this will be my first one. So thank you for having me. He would be very proud of me tonight. Thank you. So I've also never sat in the seats that you all sit in and face the roles and responsibilities that you have. But when I think about living in a medium-to-large-sized city, I often think about how difficult is it for me to get around in the city? Is it easy to get from one end of town to the other? Or am I going to be faced with traffic congestion every day, or road construction, rush hour, all these things? I think about air quality and environment, and even, even noise. Um, I think about air quality and environment and even, even noise pollution for that matter. And if I'm looking from the perspective of a business owner, I think how hard is it for people to get to their jobs? Can they get there reliably and on time? If I'm a parent, I think about how, how do my kids get to school every day? Are they waiting for a bus at oh dark 30? Or am I, as the parent, sitting in a carpool line for an hour every day, wasting my time? How do all these things work? So what if we could solve these problems and more with a green, sustainable solution that was surprisingly affordable? And not only did it not require a subsidy from the city to operate, but it could make money for the city year after year. So that's what we're here to talk about. Uh, again, my name is Paul Klein. This is Peter Muller. Um, together we co-founded VUBA about four years ago. And that's what we're here to talk about tonight. Um, just real quickly, my background is in aerospace engineering. Um, I was also an Air Force officer for a while. For about the past 15 years, I've been involved in a number of startup businesses. Um, most recently I was COO for two other companies that did smart city mobility, um, before we started VUBA. And now this is my life. I'll let Peter talk.
Thank you, Paul. Um, Madam Chairman, Mr. Mayor, City Council, thanks for having us. As Paul said, I'm Peter Muller. I should. I don't see the red light. There you go. It's on. Okay. Oh, the red light disappears when you look behind it. So, um, my background is, is civil and transportation engineering. I'm a Colorado Registered Professional Engineer. I've focused on transportation since 1980, um, in Colorado. And since about 2000, I focused on driverless transit. So I've been doing this for a while, long before people were thinking about driverless cars and, and things like that. So today we're here representing a consortium of companies, not just VUBA. We've, we're teaming with a large infrastructure finance company and a top 10 transportation construction company. And what Paul mentioned was some of the transportation problems that we face. Um, and those include cars. And cars are wonderful. We all like our cars. They're very convenient. But cars have many problems. They pollute, they're dangerous, they, they have a lot of accidents. And perhaps the biggest problem is that they're really only directly available to about 30% of the population. I mean, 70% of the population. There's 30% that just don't have direct access to cars. These are people who are too young, too old, too poor, or too inf- infirm to afford cars. And they rely on public transportation or walking or their parents or friends, which are, as Paul mentioned, often greatly inconvenienced in providing them with transportation. Buses and shuttles serve a purpose, but buses are underutilized. My understanding is here in Pueblo, it's about 1 or 2% of people that commute by buses. Buses also cause considerable road damage and, um, a lot more than cars. Uh, one bus is equivalent to many, many, many cars in terms of doing road damage. And that's a problem for the city council to keep those roads maintained. Trans is just really not appropriate for Pueblo. They're very expensive and, and so on. So we won't waste our time talking about trans. Bikes and scooters have a place, but they don't do very well in, in bad weather. They don't do very well over longer distances. And so, yes, they have a place, but they don't suit all, all the needs at all. One of the things that people tend to overlook about all of these surface transportation, uh, systems is the prob- problem of taking up city space. They take up 30 to 70% of the space in our cities. In Pueblo, my guess is that's probably around 40 to 50%. Imagine how much more efficient the cities would be if everything, if the whole city was about half the size and everything was that much closer together. Well, we can't really go there, but we don't want to add to that problem.
So we put this image up, uh, to emphasize the fact that as we create a, a mobility solution, we're also trying to create something that's beautiful in the community. Um, we don't personally think that we should be building things that are ugly or that are industrial or that detract from the city. But instead, let's use architecture and design to actually create something iconic and beautiful in the city that blends into whatever the cityscape may be. So this is an example of something that we did in a, in another project that we're working on. Um, and if you notice, there's a lot of sculpted sort of architecture there. Uh, my background is in aerospace and we bring some of that to this endeavor, um, by using molded composites and things like that. That also helps keep our vehicles lightweight, our structures lightweight, which serves to reduce the cost. And everything just sort of spirals in a positive direction that way. Um, this picture also shows vehicles operating very close together. Um, it's all computer controlled since it's automated, so we can run vehicles very close together. Um, I don't want to step on your toes, but we end up moving about 20,000 people per hour, uh, per guideway that we have. Um, there are other things to see in this picture. It's probably good.
That's about it. So.
It's backward.
Oh, that's backwards. Okay, that's why. Amazingly enough, this solution already exists. The technology's been around for many years. It's called Automated Transit Networks or ATN. It's completed over 200 million injury-free passenger miles. It's in operation around the world. However, most versions are relatively low speed and low capacity. So what you see here on the picture is versions that are in public operation and they go from the top left to the oldest version, down to the bottom right, the newest version. And when you look at the major factors that one wants to consider when looking at these systems, they all have problems. For example, um, this one has problems with cost and speed. This one has problems with cost, speed and weather and so on. As you look at them, they all have good and bad parts to them. None of them are entirely good. That's what VUBA is trying to do. We're developing the next generation of an existing technology that will have high speed and capacity and reliability, about a quarter of the cost of light rail or bus rapid transit. So it checks all the boxes. That's what we're doing. Not sure if this is going to work on, on this. Oh, there we go. That's good. Thank you. So we're looking here, at here is a medium-sized station, elevated station in a downtown environment. You'll notice that the vehicle's not going to the station, go by the station on the main guideway. Vehicles coming into the station, come off the station guideway into a station berth, bypassing other vehicles that are already in the station. So there's a huge amount of flexibility here and choreography. The vehicles are coming and going about once every five seconds. The vehicles coming and going. And they're choreographed so they don't run into each other. When passengers come into the station, they go to the kiosk to choose their destination and pay for their ride, or they do that on their smartphone. They're told to go to the green, yellow, red or blue berth and wait for their ride. So if passengers are going to theater, they go to that yellow berth and forward and the vehicle leaves. And then that berth changes destination. The next vehicle coming to that berth is going to bus station. So what you're looking at here is a steady flow of passengers through the station. People come in and people leave all the time. It's not like a bus or a train where people have to wait and gather into large groups. So this is more like water flowing through a garden hose than it is like trying to transport water in large buckets. It makes a whole lot more sense and it works a lot smoother. What we're seeing here is about 2,000 departures per hour. This would take 40 large buses to carry that many passengers. Here's a different type of station. It's a small two berth at grade station. And you'll notice that the station, the guideways and all the infrastructure is behind the existing sidewalk, even in a downtown situation. The floor of the vehicle is level with the platform, which is level with the sidewalk. So it's roll on, roll off with bags and wheelchairs and things like that. Vehicles coming to the station, come down into the station, vehicles bypassing the station, go by above. So most vehicles bypass the station, which results in most trips being express, people, I mean, in all trips being express. Some trips are, are non-stop. But all trips are expressed with people only making a few stops on their trips. Just imagine a hundred or more stations like these scattered throughout Pueblo, all interconnected with no, uh, transfers necessary. So you can go from one to the other on an express basis. So one of the things that, that shows up in the video and, and in the next picture you're about to see is that the stations are offline. This means they're on sightings, which is one of the key reasons why we're so efficient. When the stations are on siding, then people don't have to stop at them. And, um, you can have many stations without slowing things down. When you add stations to a bus route or to a, a light rail route, you slow everybody down. So adding stations actually gives you about zero net benefit. With ours, when you add stations, you add costs, but you also add ridership and you actually, the ridership grows exponentially. So your revenues increase faster than your costs. And eventually the system becomes profitable when you have enough stations. The other key that shows up on this picture is that we use small vehicles. And small vehicles mean that they don't have to stop too often. When you have a large bus, it's full of people, it's going to have to stop at just about every stop. When you have a vehicle that only has six passengers in it, it only has to stop very infrequently. So the trip is express. Wait two minutes. Yeah, okay. Um, so these light vehicles result in light infrastructure, which is inexpensive and, and obtrusive. We're probably taking way too much time here. So I'm going to run through these next pictures fairly quickly. They show various illustrations of different kinds of stations. And, um, some of the, the factors that I've already discussed here. So we'll run through this quickly in the interest of time. I want to point this out that we have one-way guideways, so we would never put three guideways on the street. This illustrates three different ways of putting guideways on a significant street. We can put it behind the sidewalk, in the median or over the parking turn lane. If we get into a situation where we have to go down a, a local street, um, we can do that too by hanging the vehicle over the parking lane and just doing a little extra tree trimming compared to what we had to do for the road anyway. So this is a proposed layout here in Pueblo. Um, it has almost 100 stations with 48 miles of guideway. Almost every home and business within the service area is within less than a five-minute walk of the system. And the maximum station-to-station time that you see in this network is 25 minutes. So you can get anywhere on that network in 25 minutes. I want to show the difference between this and bus. And the, the man in the picture on the bottom left is standing at Walmart. And that person could catch a bus and then walk anywhere in the brown area. Bus and walking could get to anywhere in the brown area within 30 minutes. Now, if we put the ATN system in, we found that from Walmart Supercenter, you can get to the whole ATN network and then walk beyond that in 30 minutes. And you realize that the bus only comes once every 30 minutes. The ATN system is there every five minutes. You, you get a ride. So most you would have to wait typically. So let's look at this from a different point of view, from big R over on the east side of the freeway. And by bus, that's how far you can get in 40 minutes from big R. And if you add the ATN system, now you're using bus and ATN. You could pass on the, on the east side and ATN on the west side. And that's how far you get in 40 minutes. Now, we've arbitrarily put the ATN on the west side and not the east side, just for starters. In reality, we would ev- eventually end up with ATN throughout, there's all parts of the city, that there's an interest in putting it in. There's no, no reason to stop, but we wanted to show that you could actually, and you would during the phased construction, have both ATN and bus. As Paul mentioned, the system can actually make money. Once you've got sufficient stations, it starts making money. And our projections for a 100-station system are that by 2030, the revenues would be about 86 million a year. The expense is about 64 million. And that would give you an annual profit of about 20 million and a cash position by 2030 of about $56 million. That's significant money. This is based on a system that it would have a capital cost round about eight or 900 million dollars. So it's a significant project also.
We're a minute over time. Um, so suffice to say that there are a number of areas that we would like to partner with the city. Um, the project itself is obvious, but we're also working on, uh, technology development right now in a half-scale, test system that will eventually translate into a full-scale test system. We're looking for a home for that. Um, we're looking for a headquarters. You saw that we were doing some work in Africa. We're also trying to set up a US-based headquarters. So that's a possibility. Um, the project itself could create, we're, we're estimating upwards of a couple thousand jobs in Pueblo. Um, there's also a manufacturing component that could probably match that as well. Um, it all depends on what the best fit could be in the community. And I think that's what we're here to ask you all for. Peter, if you want to take the last slide, um, we're, we're basically asking you all to look at this and consider, is this something that you find interesting enough to want to look into it further? And if so, it would be a relatively simple process to, to move forward on. Um, do you have any details to add to that, Peter? Because I think that will wrap it up.
Yeah, I, I do want to point out that the first bullet here is, is very important to the economy in the city. That when you put trend, this, um, technology throughout the city, the whole city becomes a transit-oriented development. There's lots of evidence showing that transit-oriented developments provide economic boosts. And so the whole city would get that boost, which is a very significant factor, I believe. Um, so what we propose to do is, um, negotiate a pre-development agreement with the city. And that agreement would cover things like starting with a feasibility study to figure out for sure. Does this work in the city and how it would work and what would the, the costs and benefits be and so on? We would also work towards demonstrating that the technology really works and towards building a manufacturing facility. If all of those things fall into place, then we would move together to undertake a public-private partnership project where we would team with you to do the project itself. And we would take care of all aspects of that, design, build, finance, operate and maintain. We're planning with our financial partner to bring financing to the table here. So we don't need a lot from you. We need your interest in doing this project and moving it further so that we can take that interest back to our financial partner and say, this is what Pueblo is interested in looking at and can you help finance it? And they're going to say, though we can't, or yes, we can. And, and they're likely to say, yes, we can, but we need the city to, to show strong interest and to put some skin in the game. And how that skin in the game ends up being defined, we'll figure out as we go along. So what we want to do now is open it up to questions from you. And, and what we would like to move towards is, if you decide you're interested in looking further into this, is a resolution saying, we're interested in investigating this further. Um, basically, a- and, and then once we have that resolution, we can take it back to our partners and figure out how do we respond to that and come back to you with a proposal. So, uh, look forward to your questions.
Thank you, Mr. Muller and Mr. Klein. What questions are there from council? Counselor Flores and then Councilwoman.
Uh, ironically, about four or five years ago, uh, I contacted a company called Skytran. Are you familiar with Skytran?
I am.
And the only difference between what you're doing and Skytran is that the vehicles actu- actually would roll off. And they were electric vehicles and you could take them further individually. If you were dropped off, say, out of six blocks from where you wanted to go, you could actually take the vehicle and get to the spot. But the thing that fascinated me was not having to acquire the land, which in any transportation project is huge. And I'm assuming that all of your structures that actually support the rail above you is actually on city property, whether it's sidewalk or exist.
Yes, one of the things we'll be looking for you is your assistance in us getting right-of-way access for columns and so on. The amount of space we take up on the ground is less than one percent of the amount of space taken up by a dedicated bus rapid transit lane. So it's tiny. It's a little more than a light pole every sixty to a hundred feet.
And the reason I was talking to Skytran, it fascinated me because I've always been interested in getting a tourist magnet, something that would bring people to Pueblo just to see. It's kind of similar to when I was a kid and the train at Disneyland in Anaheim. Everybody wanted to get on that train, and it became a real tourist magnet. But when I was talking to Skytran, they were interested in finding a community to do a demonstration project. So that they, we were talking about a three-mile area, mostly in our downtown area around our Riverwalk. And I was more interested in it to, you know, to go out and get tourists to come see this because it's so unique and so different. And do you have such a demonstration location where people can go to and actually look at what it looks like? Or when you're selling it, you could bring in prospective cities into Pueblo to show them what it looks like, how it works. And again, a shorter version of it, like three miles, so that they can actually get a feel for it.
So yes, absolutely. I had mentioned earlier that right now we're working at the half-scale level, just because size and cost requirements are good to do it at that scale now. The next step is moving into full scale for testing. And then sort of a phase one would be exactly what you were talking about, where we do a demonstration. You know, it doesn't, it's not necessarily big enough to be profitable, but it serves a different purpose in that it demonstrates the viability, demonstrates people's interest in riding it, and it also brings people to see it.
It'd be a marketing tool for you.
Exactly. And I think, I was going to say, I think the Riverwalk is actually a really good application of that.
Yeah. The other thing is that, you know, Pueblo is becoming the center of testing of not only rail, but also potentially there's other companies like Hyperloop and other things, other companies that are looking at us to test things. I heard you briefly say that you're still testing and that we could potentially be the city to offer that service to you, which is another different thing than committing to, you know. Could you give us a cost per mile on that?
Fifteen to twenty million. Another way to look at it is the cost per station is the total cost per station, everything, vehicles and everything, guideway and everything, is about ten million. So if we're looking at ninety stations, we're looking at about nine hundred million.
And again, just to clarify, that includes the vehicles as well.
Yeah. And more than the cost, what's interesting is the revenue. And the revenue doesn't cover the costs until you have a number of stations because of something called the network effect. As you add stations, you add costs, but you increase revenue exponentially. And so the cost curve goes up and the revenue curve does this, and then the two meet and they cross it. And at that point, you become profitable. And that point is somewhere between fifty and a hundred stations, mostly depending on the density of the area. Pueblo is not very dense. We're going to be around about eighty, ninety stations to get to that point. I have two or three more questions, but I'm going to acquiesce.
Counselor Warner.
Yeah, I think it's really cool, but you have this in operation in Africa?
That's where we started.
It's up and running?
No.
Okay.
So we
Is it anywhere?
It's not.
Okay.
And that was the, kind of the point, I think, Peter's early slide, where the system is in operation in a number of places around the world. But it's kind of a, it's a first-generation sort of
All the rails, right?
No, a lot of them are
In the air?
Based. Yeah, you can go ahead if you want.
The question was, are they rail-based?
No, I guess I was just mainly asking if it's in operation now. And then he, we kind of went down the rabbit hole of, I thought those were all rail that you showed.
Yeah, no, they aren't rail. They're all the same technology. Some of them on rail, some of them on flat road beds, rubber tire on pavement. That they're all the same concept, which is that they're on exclusive guideways where you do not have crossing traffic. So that makes them much easier to design and build. It's not like driverless cars where you have to deal with a child chasing a balloon across the guideway. You don't have that. So it's a controlled environment, which makes it much easier to
You're looking for small cities like ours to just get it started?
Yeah, we love the idea of small cities because of our experience with larger cities, with transportation authorities and all those things. And you end up having a political nightmare.
Oh, everything's a political nightmare.
Trying to deal with it, and we're hoping and finding with some other small cities that we're working in, that decisions can be made a whole lot quicker and easier. And we're also looking to do this with private funding and trying to stay away from government grants and things like that because that just complicates things.
Yeah, it does, extremely.
And even more delays things further. So we'd like to work with small communities where we can make quick decisions and keep things moving. Not to say that we don't want to deal with authority. We plan to comply with the American Society of Civil Engineers Automated People Move Standards. So that's the standards, like the train at Denver International Airport. The standards for that thing apply to this just as well.
Sure. Hey, thanks.
Counselor Tencio.
Yeah, well, think bigger, Pueblo. I love the idea. My background was industrial and mechanical engineering, so I love the idea. I was going to say, you probably should get in touch with Pueblo Plex. They are the entity that has the test track out, yeah. And MXV Rail is going to be building their test facilities out there. Another Ensco, is it? It's going to be out at the test track. Pueblo Plex is probably be a great place to get in touch with them, especially with the testing facility that you're thinking about. But I really like the idea. I love the idea because it's so forward-thinking. It's something that, like Mr. Flores said, bring to Pueblo and use it as an example for the rest of the world.
Exactly.
Mayor.
Yeah, well, when these gentlemen first did this presentation to me, I was intrigued by it. And especially the idea that it would be done with private money. Probably very little community money would have to be invested in this. And so I thought it was worth, you know, spending some time with exploring. It's obviously a futuristic kind of thing that I think would be a fantastic benefit for our city if it could come to fruition. And so I think we ought to go ahead and express an interest in moving forward and see where it takes us. I mean, we'd invest time, obviously, in working on that. But I think in terms of dollars and stuff, we don't have the dollars to invest. But in terms of the time, we could certainly work with them and see what's available and see what might come to fruition with some of these experts we have in surface transportation in the community. And if you're looking for a test site, we could certainly work through some of those things. And I think Pueblo would be a perfect spot for a test site, as was suggested, right in the downtown Mesa Junction area, some of those neighborhoods. So, yeah, let us know what you need, I think. I think people would like to proceed at this point.
Yes, this is fascinating to me because I've been thinking about this for a while. But, you know, it sounds to me as though your model really depends on more and more density of people using it. And that's always been a problem in our community. I mean, you always hear people say, why doesn't Costco come in here? Why doesn't Chili's have a restaurant down in Riverwalk? And it all is because of density of people. And when you have, if you're looking at smaller cities, I would be interested in looking at your financial projections and analysis on how the revenue itself could pay for the infrastructure. And because it sounds like everything is tied into the ridership revenue. And, but at some point, I would be interested in looking at those models. So yes, I would be interested in going into the next step.
Okay, we've actually developed a really detailed financial pro forma that would probably make your eyes water if we went through the whole thing, but I would love to do that. And there's also a thing that happens when you put a station in a place, you tend to increase the value of that location. And if there was somebody like a Costco or, you know, Chili's restaurant, whatever, and now suddenly you're delivering customers from all over the city directly to that spot, that changes the equation as well. And that's something that isn't, is often overlooked.
Thank you.
Yeah, the advantage is that somebody from the south side coming down to the Riverwalk could be here in five minutes and go from their house to the station and then go right back to their neighborhood without using their vehicles, which sometimes we come downtown and parking is horrible. And or if there's a concert here at Memorial Hall, people from all over the city would make a trek on that thing to get down here and save parking and everything else.
You can actually shift parking, right? If you have valuable real estate that right now is a parking lot, you can shift that parking someplace less valuable, put a couple of stations there and move people in.
Today, we drove around CSU Pueblo, and we think that that might be another place to do a pilot project, a loop around the campus connecting all those buildings together, allowing them to consolidate their parking. They've got parking all over the place. And you could replace a lot of that parking with buildings and have a more dense campus. So there's a lot of benefits in situations like
Not to mention that part of the city is going to blow up in the next few years.
Are you predicting a lot of growth?
A lot of growth.
So I will add one other thing. You mentioned Skytran. And I have a feeling you may or may not have heard from Transit X as well. We know both of those companies really well. And the one thing that makes us different from them is that we're right here. So, I mean, we're highly accountable because I live forty-five minutes from here and have lived here for twenty years, and Peter lives slightly further. And you've lived here for, I don't know how many years.
Forty-two.
Forty-two years. So we're not people from far off who are trying to come in and do snake oil stuff. I mean, we live here. We want to see improvement in local communities as much as anything.
I'm by no means a planner. I'm wondering if our own directors from Planning and Public Works in Transit will be involved in these discussions moving forward?
They've had information available to them, was made available to me from the first presentation that was maybe a couple of months ago at this point. But, yeah, and I shared that with the city departments to say, hey, is this something you think we ought to look at? And let's get a work session and go from there. But, yeah, they'll be intimately involved, obviously.
Okay, what were their preliminary thoughts?
Well, I'm not going to speak for them at this point. We also had Ben Valdez obviously involved in transit, and I think he was excited about it to some extent. So, yeah, I think they think it's worth continuing to look at. Nobody is saying, go, let's invest money or anything like that at this point. But I think in terms of how would this pencil out, where could it go? What benefits would we get from the city? I think people are willing to look at exploring that.
All right, then moving on to our next agenda item.
All right, thank you very much.
Thank you. Is a 2022 Chili Fest update. So can I please have Mr. Nava and then I see Ms. Kitzman to the podium, please?
I've always said we need an R boost.
Yeah, that's That'll be a problem. Oh, thanks. Sorry. Dennis is distracting me.
I don't know how to follow that presentation. It's going to be so nice to have something so fancy in Pueblo. Where they drop off and how we're going to, how we're going to get people through security where they drop off. So we're already trying to figure that out in our heads.
That's right. We can use the shuttles for sure.
So thank you for allowing us to come tonight and talk about Chili Fest. It was a great year. And anytime we can brag on the work that we do at the Chamber, especially in regards to this Chili Fest and the impact that it has on this community, you know, we're happy to do that. So Danielle is going to go through some information. The packet that she handed out was what we provide to our sponsors. It's kind of a recap of, you know, what we accomplished throughout the year or throughout the Chili Fest. And then I'll answer any questions that you guys have at the end.
Perfect. So I know most of us are pretty familiar with Chilean Fríjolay Festival and have attended. And it just, you know, for thirty years, I know prior to working at the Chamber, it was just one of those things, you just show up and it shows up and you go to it and you have a good time. But love to talk about the inner workings of the festival and, you know, how proud we are of it. Of course, the mission of the Chilean Fríjolay Festival is to celebrate and promote Pueblo's heritage, our culture, our agricultural assets by creating a sustainable community event that encourages locals to engage together and that promotes Pueblo as a destination for overnight stays. And then also, of course, creates a positive impact for our community and our businesses in general. This year, over half a million dollars in local goods, services, labor were spent locally here in the community on things such as tents, fencing, stages, lighting, security, maintenance, trash, shuttles, electrical equipment, utilities, and so forth. The Chamber also paid themselves over seventy-five hundred dollars in sales tax to the festival in addition to the taxes being paid by the hundred and eighty vendors that we had in the festival. The Chamber also coordinates with multiple community agencies and partners, such as, of course, the City of Pueblo, City and County Health Department, Fire Department, Police Department, AMR, et cetera. A lot of work goes into those collaborations and we depend on them and the festival depends on those. The, in addition to those, those things, we create partnerships that support the mission of agritourism and our local culture, such as the Pueblo Food Project, Palmer Land Trust, El Pueblo History Museum, and UCCS Grain School, were some of the collaborations that we put together this year. Rocky Mountain Sare, another one created, has created for the last few years, a Kids Corner, which helps to promote their extensive programming. Then we work to encourage, of course, the local merchants to come out and take advantage of the space in front of their locations to promote themselves and attract new clientele. Media, the Chili Fest generates statewide press and media coverage throughout Pueblo regarding Pueblo, the Pueblo chili, and supportive Pueblo agriculture in general. Nationwide media attention is pushed through our partnerships with the Colorado Tourism Office and out-of-state, now out-of-state media contacts. A win this year was securing a media slot during the Bronco Game prior to the festival. Many of you might have seen that, and that really helped spike some dramatic activity through multiple websites that we were tracking at that time. Communications, marketing, and advertising run through all social and digital platforms through Visit Pueblo, the Greater Pueblo Chamber, and the related websites and social platforms. We also host various travel writers. I know I talk about that a lot in this room. From, you know, they creating organic content through lots of different platforms. This year, one of the most recent, we had a Colorado travel blogger who came to the festival, enjoyed it, did a lot of great organic media for that, and then also enjoyed the city throughout the weekend as well. And then just last week, posted some blogs about her favorite block in Colorado happened to be the Solar Rose Block and the Analog Bar and the Proximity of the Shamrock and D-Taco. So it was just great to see, you know, some of that. So trying to capitalize on that organic experiences. The festival presents five signature events along with the standard favorites. Of course, the Chilean Salsa Showdown. This year, we featured sixty contestants and over fourteen judges sampled hundreds of salsas and chilies. And we handed out two thousand dollars in prize money. The Jalapeno Eating Contest featured eleven contestants, one from Mexico. The winner ate fifteen jalapenos in ten minutes. It was pretty ugly. Then it was awarded, we awarded about four hundred dollars in prize money there. And the Chihuahua and France Parade And the Chihuahua and France Parade is just gangbusters. We drew a hundred and eighteen furry competitors to that event with their parents and nearly a thousand attendees watched that little parade. So it's been growing in in success. Of course, this year we added the First Annual Balloon Glow, which was an amazing addition to the festival. Brought hundreds of people out to the Riverwalk to see that that balloon grow and just added a great wow factor for media and pictures and so forth. And then, of course, the Balloon Fest was a great addition in twenty twenty one. This year, the great group of volunteers spearheaded by one of our board members grew that to thirteen balloons that launched from Langone Field and over seventeen thousand people attended. We're hoping to capitalize that and, you know, grow that further and further as the years go on. And then, of course, in addition, fifty local and regional entertainment acts over four stages participated. And also, we partnered with El Pueblo History Museum to showcase their fango fango folkloric competition that brought dancers from all across the country as well as Mexico. And then we also hosted the Miss Pueblo contestants on that stage as well. And then, of course, the star of the show, the Russell Produce Farmers Market, six chili vendors, farmers markets were in that area. And I'm happy to report that all of them were just really happy to share with the activity and sales that they had this year. Some reporting that it was the best year that they've had in the twenty eight years. So that was really great to hear. And in addition, similarly, the markets in the Mesa also see that huge push of of business out there. As many locals in our messaging, we say, don't buy your chili if you're a local at the festival, buy it out at the farms. And and we really have seen that messaging work well through the years. On top of that, we also partnered with the Pueblo Memorial Airport to host the Second Annual Public Chili Chili Fest Fly-In, which brought over fifty regional pilots to Pueblo. We give them free passes to Chili Festival. They come in, enjoy for the day, the community, and then we shuttle them back to the airport. And of course, a hundred and eighty street vendors and sponsors were accommodated with logistics and needs for over three days. And they really, of course, fill out the streets and make make the show. And we could not do any of this without the support of the public community, of course, our members, our ambassadors. The Chamber recruits and depends on over four hundred and fifty volunteer shifts for thirteen entry gates, entertainment gardens, vendor check-in and merchandise sales to make this thing go. It's a it's a pretty heavy lift. So over those twenty eight years of blood, sweat and tears, of course, from a small staff and hundreds of Pueblo proud volunteers, that's brought this festival to the award-winning festival it is. And we're happy to recap some of the awards we've received over the years. Downtown Colorado Inc., the Colorado Tourism Office, of course, Best in Pueblo. We are recognized by Colorado Fairs and Festivals Association, the Colorado Agritourism Association, as well as the Colorado Ag Leadership Program. So that's about what I have prepared. And of course, you did get that event summary, that kind of details some of those other things there. Happy turn over to Dwayne.
I think one of the big things that we that we really try to keep in mind with this festival is is why it was originally started. And it wasn't about, you know, it's it's great that it's in downtown Pueblo and it supports all of our downtown businesses, but this festival was designed to support our ag community and to make sure that we're showcasing the work that that ag community does. We get tons of phone calls all year from vendors, from business owners down in that area wanting us to change this and change that. You know, and and we we try to accommodate as best we can to support our businesses, but the focus always has to be on what that festival was around and it's around our ag community. So making the making sure we're making those decisions and having those at the forefront of our mind when those decisions are made are are super important for us down there. But we we've received tons of good feedback from our business owners. They really participated heavily this year, coming out of their businesses and setting up in front and really seeing the impact of that weekend and what they can have on their their business if they engage in that. And the ones that, you know, don't sell goods or services, they they will allow us to put a different vendor there, you know, and and they work with us on that. So it's it's really a great partnership with everybody down there with our local fire department, with our police department. I think Public Police did an amazing job this year. They had a strong presence out there. They were visible and it was noticed. You know, we were getting tons of of great comments from the community members, our vendors and people that were there about the step up in security and the presence of the police department being on site. What questions do you have for us?
Thank you. Gator Chamber, what questions are there from Council? Counselor Forrest.
Well, I think one I one I alluded to, let me see if it's on here, the 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 NFL effect, we started to call it, you know, from the ad from that was phenomenal, gave us a great spike. And we tracked some of that and that activity. I think, you know, you can, this was only off of Pueblo Chili and Frigole Festival dot com. And of course, we see, because we will cross promote through multiple platforms, through Visit Pueblo, et cetera, we'll see all of those analytics spike as well with paid promotion. We really bumped up digital advertising and things like that that helped to cross promote not only the Chili Festival but Pueblo as a destination. So I mean, really small, but I know this isn't that legible, but some of the some of the things that stood out was the average time on the page, people really looking at festival facts and spending time on those on the website was ideal for us and whether they navigated through the website. So we see a lot of that, you know, where they're looking for other things to do, moving from the Chili Festival site to visit public.org, for instance, to kind of plan their weekends. We've tracked a lot of great gains in that in that area as well. So overall, just really great media activity. And of course, chilies are fun to talk about. So whenever we get great advertising, Denver Post, for instance, has covered us pretty well. And we'll see when their ads hit. We track a lot of great activity from the Denver Post and Denver area. So, yeah.
So that was great. I I in talking to Mike, the guy that owns the the Goldust, he said, he 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 said the majority of the customers that come into his businesses for those three days are from Colorado Springs. So I think we see a huge amount of traffic that comes down from Springs. I know, you know, with a a piece of software that we're we're hoping to purchase next year, we'll be able to geofence that festival footprint and see exactly where people are coming from, you know, where they're visiting. Hopefully, we can see hotel stays based off of how we can capture that. I know with the digital marketing, you know, you jump onto a website. I'm sure you've experienced it. You jump on your phone, you look at something in Pueblo and all of a sudden you're getting ads like crazy about what you looked for. So tapping onto the similar type of of digital marketing is we can hopefully track some of that traffic.
I'm stealing a little bit from Counselor Attentio. He keeps pushing us to think bigger and I like that idea. It to me, when you look at some of those days, it almost seems like you've outgrown the downtown area. And I'm just wondering if there's thinking about how you can make it even bigger. And I I don't know what we two would do, but
you know, we we've kicked that around as well. You know, we we have some concerns with, you know, some things that are gonna be changing. And and you know, me and the mayor have had this conversation before with the bump outs that he'd be put down on Union and really condensing the lanes there. We're gonna have to be creative on what that even looks like, you know, because the 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 money that we generate from sponsors, from vendors, helps pay for the infrastructure for this festival. So by eliminating a whole center lane, we're losing a lot of vendor space to pay for some of this stuff. Now, again, I don't expect the city to make a decision off a three-day festival. We're just gonna have to figure out how to adapt with, you know, these changes that are coming. And hopefully be included in that conversation as we move through that to see how is this gonna work? Because there are a couple of events that that will have a huge impact on, you know, the Pueblo Classic and and the Chili Fest. So making sure that we're working out to the and working together and trying to figure out how to work through those issues, I think is gonna be.
Well, you guys did a great job. Congratulations. And, you know, thank you for the presentation today. It's really a nice event and you guys do a great job.
Appreciate it.
Other questions? Counselor Graham.
Danielle, did you guys, did you say that you collected over seventy five thousand dollars in sales tax?
No, seventy, no, we we paid seventy five hundred dollars in sales tax from the the Chamber. That was our sales tax from merchandise sales, et cetera, that the Chamber had to pay. And then, of course, the vendors individually pay their own sales tax to the, you know, to the city based on their sales.
What about the like the beer sales and stuff that comes out of the tent? Who does that money go to?
That goes to help pay for the infrastructure costs of the festival.
And and the sales tax on that that you guys paid.
We collect that and pay that as well.
That's the seventy five hundred.
Yes. And that's what we're projecting that it at, based off of the sales, based off of merchandise. We're projecting it at about seventy five hundred dollars with the sales tax. I don't, we haven't paid that as of yet. We're still working with the city to get that figured out on what that exact amount is and then we'll get that.
And that's just city tax or state and city?
I believe it's state or city.
City, seventy five hundred?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Other questions or comments?
I do have one last comment. I just wanted to put out there. This festival is completely held outside of our lodging tax. This festival is nowhere is not funded by lodging tax. It is not supported by lodging tax. This is one hundred percent a chamber paid for event. And the reason I say that is because it scares the heck out of me. You know, being in this seat and seeing what this festival costs to put on, one bad weather year could destroy that chamber. And it's happened in the past, you know, and talking to our auditor, there's been years past, we've had to mortgage that building just to pay the bills for the year because that festival has has put us in the hole. So you know, we gotta be very careful on in in partnering with with a great businesses in this community to make sure that we are getting costs at a at a reasonable price in order to keep putting this on because, you know, like I said, one bad weather year, we'd we'd lose a ton of money doing that.
Mayor.
Did I understand you, Dwayne, to say that you spent five hundred thousand dollars in cost putting this on?
Absolutely. Yep. Over five hundred thousand. And that's that's paying entertainment. That's paying for stages, for barriers.
Yep.
Security.
Yep. It's a big number, obviously.
It is. You know, so you can see how how one bad weather night or two bad weather nights, you know, that that would hugely impact that that chamber.
Is it more expensive to to put on it? Like, do does the revenue that you guys make from the festival help to subsidize that?
It does. It does. But you know, when you're, you know, I think I think the misconception is that this, that the the festival makes a ton of money. And it makes it makes a decent amount of money, but it also doesn't take into account the man hours that go into putting that festival on. I would estimate that ten percent of our total salaries for the year goes just dedicated to Chili Fest. I mean, we came out of Chili Fest and a week later we were doing a debrief on it. And a couple of days later after that, we're already starting looking for sponsors, you know, securing vendors, securing, you know, contracts. It is a year process to put that festival on. And, you know, coming as a board member into this seat, I had no clue the work that actually goes into this. And it isn't, it isn't just a three-day event. This is a year-long event to get this put on.
Any changes for next year?
You know, we have some thoughts. Footprint being one, we want to look at what that looks like. You know, we're getting a lot of calls about kind of spreading out the farmers markets, but you know, I'm talking to Danielle and learning the history on why that wasn't an option. You know, it depends on construction with Union, which I believe is gonna start in twenty twenty three. Is that correct? Hopefully. You know, we, there's gonna be some changes, some processes that we put in place this year. You know, I had to experience this at least one time in order to kind of see what changes I need to discuss with my team. And, you know, we've got through it and and there's some some things that process-wise I think will change. We had a couple of security things come up that really opened our eyes. So not so much with the public, just more of just internal that we need to address going into next year as well.
Cool. Counselor Forrest, you had something?
No, I I just I just wanted to say that, you know, to me, the Chili Fest is an economic explosion for a lot of those businesses down there. Several of them told me that just that festival itself is a is a huge percentage of their annual income. So and I was kind of shocked. I mean, a lot of those restaurants and taverns and stuff belonged to a union. And so it's that ripple effect again, you know, that you've created. So you're you're really an economic arm during that Chili Festival and it really helps our businesses. So thank you.
Most of the vendors we spoke to said they made, they made, they did better during the three-day Chili Fest than they did during the State Fair, which is what, eleven days? So I mean, that says a lot about the traffic in that festival footprint.
Just anecdotally, my wedding was actually the same weekend as Chili Fest Fest this year.
So you're gonna celebrate next year on your.
Well, all of my my guests actually attended the Chili Fest who were out of town and they really enjoyed it. So that was kind of a cool thing to showcase during that. All right.
Congratulations, by the way.
Thank you. Any other questions, comments?
Seven?
No, four. Four Entertainment Gardens. Yeah.
Nice. Okay, then moving right along on our agenda. Thank you, Gator Chamber. Is Resource X Priority-Based Budgeting? So Mr. Fabian, I see, is on Zoom.
Madam Chair, City Council, before Eric Fabian begins, I I wanted to give some quick background. In the fall of twenty twenty, when City Council was discussing budget at the time for twenty twenty one in the unknown of what would happen through COVID in the next year, Bloomberg Philanthropies contracted with the Results for America to ask individual come individual cities to apply for a program called Cities Budgeting for Equity and Recovery, which Eric will discuss here in a minute. But in that process, the city applied for, well, let's see, Shelley Dunham was the grant writer. And we were successfully admitted into the program along with, I believe Eric's going to say, twenty eight other cities. The process began in in the late of twenty twenty and in, I think, April of twenty twenty one, the Finance Director retired. And so the mayor and I had conversations with Results for America to say, well, this is so focused on on the priorities that we had asked for, which one was priority-based budgeting and the other two was looking at equity with respect to the general fund budget. And communicating and creating a definition of equity with respect to the general fund budget. And I think the mayor and and the Results for America administrators talked the city out of of just pulling back from the program. So we moved forward with with me me in the seat, meeting weekly with the Results for America team. And then we lost Shelley, you know, to retirement. And we went through the rest of twenty twenty one and I think made some really good progress. I think that President Graham asked, I listened to one presentation from Mr. Fabian at the end of twenty twenty one, when you approved the contract going into this year and we'll go into twenty twenty three and asked if Mr. Fabian would maybe recap where we've been and where we are and where we can go into the future with looking at a priority-based budgeting transition in how we communicate the general fund budget from line item to maybe programs. And with that, Mr. Mayor, anything else or can I turn it over to Eric?
Jump right into Eric's presentation.
Thank you.
All right. Well, thank you, Laura, and good evening, council members and Mayor Gradisar. I appreciate you having me back to present to council. As much as the Chamber might have been intimidated to follow the Smart City Transit presentation, I'm more nervous about following Chili Fest presentation because I know how awesome and important that is to the city, but I'll give it my best shot. So I'm going to share my screen and ask if council can see the slides that I'm providing or has their own set, perhaps?
Yeah, we're good.
Okay, great. So Resource X is a Denver-based company that supports local governments in their priority-based budgeting initiative. We've worked with over three hundred local governments across North America, including upwards of fifteen in Colorado itself. And our focus is on providing software and consulting services to really support cities to understand how the their resources are li- are aligned with the outcomes that they're trying to achieve. So the framework of priority-based budgeting, as you might recall, revolves around helping cities understand what programs and services we actually provide, what's the fully loaded cost of providing those programs and services? what programs and services we actually provide, what's the fully loaded cost of providing those programs and services, what specific outcomes and priorities does the city hope to achieve, and how do those programs and services align with those unique outcomes that the city wants to achieve? That is ultimately the framework of priority-based budgeting. And this was inspired and developed within a local government environment uh because of the challenges that were identified within a uh line item budget. And so when we look at a line item budget, we see um professional services, and we see fuel costs, and we see maintenance and supplies and postage and telephone. And we say to ourselves, how does that communicate how a safe community may exist as an outcome in the city of Pueblo? Are we making our citizens healthier by spending more or less on maintenance supplies? Um, how is economic development impacted from the perspective of a line item budget? Um, and so from another perspective, we can look at, on the left side, we see non-personnel line items, and again, we're looking at training, and we're looking at uh rentals and supplies and materials, and on the right side, we see um our personnel line item expenses representing our city employees, and we say, wh- what are these folks organized around to perform? And in this case, all of these personnel and non-personnel line items actually represent snow removal. Snow removal is a program, and that is a vocabulary and a and a conversational term that is immediately identifiable uh internally um across all city departments and externally uh from the resident and community perspective. And so the first step is to translate that line item budget into a program budget so we can have a more multifaceted conversation around terms that we're all familiar with. From the city of uh Littleton, who's a customer of ours, they've identified a program inventory that includes median and streetscape maintenance, payroll processing, and they understand the fully loaded line item costs to deliver those programs. But the conversation is around programs because that's where um you can bring data to bear and have a more uh knowledgeable and easily familiar conversation around those services that the city provides. One additional example, procurement um of of many different examples, and ultimately from a priority-based budgeting framework, um as I referenced earlier, you identify the program that the city provides, procurement. We have a program description, what exactly is the purpose of procurement? We understand what department that program procurement um lives within. We understand the fully loaded cost. We understand the amount of employees that it takes to deliver that program. And we start to understand some additional um attributes of that program around, is the program mandated? Um, is there any cost recovery? Are we uh subsidizing that program a hundred percent? And if so, w- why? Uh, there might be a very good reason uh to fully subsidize that program, uh but there might not be the knowledge that that program is being fully subsidized, and there could be some changes to that service delivery. So ultimately, we have a program inventory that's developed. Um, each program lives within a department, so here we're seeing Parks and Rec, and some of the programs that they deliver are athletic field maintenance and grounds and last landscaping, um ball field and shelter rental, really understanding all the programs every department delivers and the fully loaded cost of delivering that program so that you can have much more robust conversations around decisions on the future of that program um and how that might be advancing the city priorities and outcomes that everybody wants to achieve. I mentioned this previously, that there's a measurement of each program, and some are around data points, like is the program mandated or what the cost recovery is. But the other measurement is also around significant city outcomes and priorities that could include equity. It could include economic development.
Mr. Fabian?
Yes.
I'm so sorry to interrupt. Can you please um make your slideshow full screen?
I would have to.
Like? Great.
I know that there, the slides are small, on the small side, so I apologize. See how we might be able to make this a little bigger for you.
Yeah, sorry. We're seeing the notes thing now, which is fine. Oh, perfect. And then would you mind sending your slideshow to, oh, Ms. Solano has it. Okay, uh, continue. Thank you.
All right. My apologies. This is better. I'm hoping. Um, so again, measuring programs against those outcomes that you're trying to achieve and understanding that alignment, not only from a program level, but the amount of investment in resources and dollars towards these outcomes that you're trying to achieve. Ultimately, um we come to a perspective of where we are able to um identify the outcomes that any city is trying to achieve and be able to drill down into them, like the example of Shared Prosperity. We can see the exact programs that the city delivers that are of high alignment with that specific outcome and the full amount of investment in dollars that the city is investing towards a certain outcome. Um, and that's not only important from internal decision-making, uh but it's also important for resident and community communication. Um, so when you're doing um resident surveys like you've done recently, and you're receiving communication that a safe community is an important outcome, you can come back and say, we're investing twenty million dollars across these fifty-five programs to deliver safe community. And we provide these platforms as well. As uh Ms. Solano referenced, uh, we first started working with the city of Pueblo um during, let's see, April twenty-eleven, and Pueblo was one of only twenty-eight cities to participate in the City Budgeting for Equity and Recovery Initiative launched by Bloomberg Philanthropies. Um, within that program and throughout the rest of twenty-twenty-one, um, we supported the city in in defining equity for the city. We developed a full program inventory across twenty-one departments uh for the city of Pueblo. Um, and of course, with extensive support and collaboration with uh City of Pueblo staff and leadership, uh, we identified the fully loaded cost to provide those programs. Um, and we provided a programmatic evaluation um across multiple basic program attributes, and at that time, the equity outcome that the city was seeking to achieve. And then we also uh provided what we call a facilitated insights workshop uh to evaluate the uh programmatic data that was developed and um look for recommendations from city staff from across departmental perspective on how to um enhance service delivery so that they would have a more significant impact uh on the outcomes that you wanted to achieve. Finally, we we helped the city develop a custom um ARPA scoring matrix uh to evaluate the multitude of proposals that you received on how to spend those ARPA funds that ultimately became and adopted best practice with multiple cities across the nation. Um, and I thank Ms. Solano for her participation in probably half a dozen different um panel discussion webinars um hosted by Resource X and and the Bloomberg team. Um, so ultimately, we developed this um again, program budgeting platform revolving around your program inventory, costs, scoring, and why that was important is because from a line item perspective, again, there's, it's not as intuitive, the connection is not as obvious on how um your services and service levels and outcomes are linked to a line item, non-personnel or personnel budget. And from a programmatic perspective, we believe that that's um a superior vehicle to analyze, um have discussions around and uh create a platform for um actionable change and greater alignment with the outcomes that you're trying to achieve. So the um kind of scoreboard of outcomes that the city achieved in twenty-twenty-one was five hundred and twenty-two total programs and services identified across twenty-one participating departments, representing seventy million of Pueblo budget. Um, and when we then looked at um the Insights Facilitated Workshop, there were over seventy specific program-level recommendations developed by your team on how to create greater alignment uh with the programs you deliver towards the outcomes that you want to achieve. And some of those, um, I'm gonna breeze through this slide, some of the specific outcomes that um and recommendations that your staff created revolved around um expanding on the local transit service, uh developing a bus route to service the Pueblo Airport and industrial parks to better connect workers to employment opportunities. Another uh recommendation developed by um your team um was to evaluate solar installation on city-owned assets, and I understand that this uh might be a conversation that's continuing within the city. Uh, there was also the recommendation to continue a Zoom opportunity for members of the public to um attend uh public hearings around planning and zoning issues. And then another one revolved around recruitment. I'm sorry, I skipped the slide, but um recruitment and retention of employees with an equity focus. We talked about the ARPA scoring matrix, so I'm I'm gonna swing through there. Um, so at the, our participation with the city um ended at the end of December twenty-twenty-one, and then it paused for a while. Um, and then uh thanks to council approval of a new contract, we um partnered back with the city this summer. Um, but it happened to have been the time when you were already in budget uh development mode. Um, and so what we attempted to do was identify um a handful of city priorities and associate the budget proposal line items uh towards those priorities. And so we worked with um your team from a general fund and enterprise zone or enterprise fund perspective uh to analyze the variety of personnel and non-personnel budget proposals and uh identify what city outcome they may be most aligned with. And when we're talking about city outcome, we identified um outcomes such as government service excellence, infrastructure, economic development, and so on and so forth from this list you can see. And when we perform that analysis, um, we see where the investment from a um proposed budget perspective um is heading towards, and from the pie chart on the left is general fund, total non-personnel budget proposals. We're seeing the vast majority are invested towards government service excellence. Uh, we see ten percent on community safety, three percent on neighborhood conditions, um and some smaller percentages um with a variety of other um city outcomes. The pie pie chart on your right is personnel, general fund, budget proposals, and we see the overwhelming majority um is invested in the community safety. Um, and then we also see government service excellence represented well, and then neighborhood conditions uh to a lesser degree. We then combined um the non-personnel and personnel general fund budget proposals, so we got a a more holistic uh perspective on those budget proposals, and we still see a similar outcome where forty-eight percent of investment is going into community safety, forty-two percent into government service excellence, and so on and so forth. But this perspective of the a- being able to communicate where investment is in is heading from a priority uh and outcome perspective, I think, might be a value um for council um and the mayor, and might be of interest to communicate to uh residents as well. Um, and then at an enterprise fund perspective, we see um somewhat of a dominance in investment in government service excellence um followed by infrastructure and community safety. So the benefits of the uh priority-based um, the prioritized budget exercise um is that we had uh department heads participating and reviewing and providing feedback on priority alignment. And I know I only have two minutes, so I'll be wrapping up shortly. Uh, we have a better understanding of budget proposal alignment with city priorities. Uh, similarly, a better understanding of resource investment into city priorities. Um, and then we also have not only a general fund perspective, but in this case, also an enterprise fund broken out by individual enterprise funds as well. Um, the opportunities moving into twenty-twenty-three is that um Pueblo has an incredible head start on developing a program inventory and not necessarily having to communicate only at the line item level. Um, once this budget is adopted, we would have an opportunity to update the um volume of data from a program perspective that you've already developed and refresh that um and be able to apply that towards uh your next budget development cycle. Um, and then be able to not only communicate investment towards city priorities, um but also identify the specific programs that the city delivers that are highly aligned with the priorities and outcomes the city's trying to achieve. So that is what I would recommend for um our work together moving forward. Our contract um is good through the end of May of twenty-twenty-three, and that would provide um a lot of opportunity to engage with city staff and further develop and update their uh program data platform, and perhaps utilize that for your future uh budget development and communication opportunities. So thank you for um having me back to um engage with with council and the mayor and and team Pueblo, and I'd be happy to take any questions you may have.
Thank you, Mr. Fabian, for all of that information. What questions are there from council? Uh, Ms. Solano?
Well, we're ju- we're just a few months into the contract here, and and I wanted to thank Eric for the hard work and the department directors. You know, when you look at the slides that talk about, you know, you can't, community safety, you can't, you can't know in advance that that's, you know, six new firefighters and three new or two new community service operators, and and then one new dispatcher, whatever positions those were, but that's actual twenty-twenty-three data from every Form A that was submitted on top of the twenty-twenty-two budget to change or request from the mayor and city council increases to their department budgets. So it doesn't have the narrative attached to it. You can just see the um the pie chart. So now with our our new director of finance and um with your approval last year to hire a a budget analyst for the finance department, um, there's a lot, there's a lot of opportunity to communicate a line item budget to the important aspects of the community's use of our general fund budget that we can uh continue to move forward with, with um the expertise of 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 Eric and Resource X, and his brother is Chris um that that can work with Pueblo to get to accomplish that transition, and then you can communicate, the budget will never go away in line item um as you have it in the proposed budget. It will never go away in the use of Tyler. But the communication and the understanding of maybe what's in it, proposed in it and and represented in a different, communicated in a different way um might be helpful.
Uh, Councilor Flores, my counselor.
Yeah, I was, I was trying to uh reconcile in my mind uh that uh when we review budgets as a council, you know, going through all twenty-one departments is difficult enough. But when you add the fact that there's fif- five hundred But when you add the fact that there's five hundred and twenty two, I don't know what the word is for that, but programs, okay, programs within each department. It kind of overwhelms the mind that are we, you know, what what does the involvement of the council? What is the involvement of the council when we're now having to deal with five hundred and twenty two programs versus twenty one departments?
Well, the value is is in the system itself. So if you asked today, what is the the cost of crack and seal repair? Or what does it cost to paint repaint stripes in the city? Those are are the programs that Andrew came up with or part of them. And so with this system design, it should be able to, we should be easier every day to be able to say what happens out in the city and when it is crack and repair the seals or what does the painting cost or what is just the curb and gutter? Those are the programs or snow removal. If you wanted to know what the personnel costs were with associated with snow removal and what the cost of the snow melt and all the rest of it attached to it. If the program will design what a program it's attached to and the system then will pull that information, it's just cost accounting by program.
And if I may add to that, that was a great description, Laura. I would also say much like not every line item has a new budget proposal associated with it year on year. Not every program will either. So while the city may provide in this case, five hundred and twenty two programs across twenty one departments, you'll only have a budget proposal associated with, you know, ten to fifteen percent of them likely. So you would not be required to review each and every one year over year.
Thank you for that clarification. Appreciate it. I assume that this exercise is helping with productivity and providing more services to our constituents and being able to budget that and spend the least on items rather than providing more services, more productivity from our employees.
I think, Larry, excuse me, Councilor Attentio, one day it will. And so so right now, the cost came from ARPA to to initiate this exercise. And before that, and when the city was selected to be part of the city's budgeting record and recovery had no cost. But you know, for the first time a year ago, eighteen department directors got to sit together and look at what everybody else's priorities and budgets look like. Hadn't been done before, you know, you you know what your own department is and you submit that budget and then you you get the budget book and you know how to move forward. But there wasn't much cross department conversation. And you know, part of that stemmed from, you see, the CDL licensing and training that that council just approved to repave the airport with the six hundred thousand dollars of repaving and the partnership with PCC that they're going to train our CDL drivers. Well, in that meeting a year ago, so many departments said the cost of X of our external CDL training, what could we do different and share the cost across the city instead of those siloed exercises? So I think the benefits are still to come. There's just on the front side. But also, if you want to talk about the swimming pool as pools in the city as a cost function, as one cost center, you'd be able to talk to the community members in all the four parts of the city that have pools about the investment that all of you make the decisions with respect to what the where the pools are located, when are they open, what kind of costs is associated with it and the benefits to the communities. So I think more still to come.
Well, I thought I saw in the presentation that this is a mechanism by which we paid less and get more from a budgeting standpoint. Not necessarily reducing costs, but increasing the value and increasing productivity of our employees, increasing the services that we provide to our constituents. That's where I see the value in this thing. An exercise for bureaucrats to do is to me only to provide more services and more productivity to our constituents. That's what that's why I see this whole thing doing.
Yeah, sorry to interrupt earlier, council member. To your point, the the insight workshop that I referenced during the presentation is in part an opportunity to perform that evaluation from a program level. There's an opportunity to look at cost recovery. There's specific opportunities to look at cost to program efficiency and ways to deliver those programs more efficiently and at a cost effective level. Even opportunities to look at partnerships and understand the city doesn't necessarily need to be responsible for delivering each and every service. If there's other private sector or public sector partners that could be utilized to deliver that program. So so there is a component of that ROI type of analysis that you're referring to.
Yeah, I think so.
Councilor Warner.
Larry, I just saw it more as a easier way to communicate the budget. I didn't see as it is productivity at all. I mean, it's not going to increase productivity. It's just it's it's a way to explain the budget in a better way to the public and to the.
Well, prioritizing the budget and its line items, we might get another mile of street.
Other questions or comments? Okay, thank you, Mr. Fabian, for that presentation. Let's see, the next, then our final work session agenda is a budget work session, which is our final one. So Mayor, take it away.
We've got a slide session there that Ms. Solano is going to take you through. But obviously, we've had several work sessions with city council. We, I think you have a copy of the presentation. I think you have a copy in front of you of the summary of the changes to the B one that is contained in the budget book. And what we've highlighted here on this first page.
Hey, Mayor, really fast, Councilor Warner has a question.
Laura and Eric, I don't know if Eric's still there, but I think it would be great in the budget to have even what we give the nonprofits. So that when somebody calls and says, what are you doing about housing? You know, cash to the neighborhood works or cash to to or our own our own housing department. I mean, that should be all lumped in one thing.
I I think moving forward, we absolutely can and the software and I fear he's gone by now.
Even though it's not.
He's two hours on the East Coast, but he's gone by now.
Oh, he's gone. Okay.
But I think that we saw and with Alex last week where their portal can absolutely be a we have a portal through Open Gov, but this one might look different where any citizen could go on anytime.
Right. I mean, including including like council or council contingencies that went toward crazy faith or something. Okay, thanks.
Okay, Mayor.
Okay, yeah, I want to just go through, and I assume you all have this summary of changes to the proposed B one. On the screen is the most current B one. But I wanted to just highlight for you the changes that we've made since we've had these conversations. Number one, we've increased the VITA United Way contribution by five thousand dollars. They're the ones that they're the ones that do the income tax returns. And so they've requested an increase and we've agreed to do that. We've included there the economic dashboard funds that we talked about to the tune of a hundred and four thousand, two hundred and fifty dollars for two thousand and twenty three. We've increased the Latino Chambers contribution by seventy five thousand. So their total will be a hundred thousand dollars for two thousand and twenty three. We've increased the contribution to the Sangre de Cristo Arch Center to fifty thousand dollars. So it'll be basically the same amount as last year. That's money that that's fifty thousand dollars more basically than they requested. But they cut cut theirs back because we talked to them last year about, we're going to give you fifty thousand extra, but it's going to be only for the Da Vinci exhibit. Since that exhibit is done, they sent in a reduced request, but they can use this extra fifty thousand dollars. So we have included that in there after conversations with them. We've also added here capital improvements to the Ice Arena bathrooms in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. You'll recall that a couple of months ago, or in August, I guess, we approved a management agreement with the Ice Arena with the Pueblo Bulls for the management of the Ice Arena. One of the things that that contract provides is any capital improvements will be made by the manager of the Ice Arena unless unless arrangements are made to the contrary or agreed to in writing between the city and the Pueblo Bulls. They've come to us because they need to increase the size of the restrooms there. They're being so successful with the hockey team and the number of attendees that they're attracting every to every game, every home game, that the restrooms are simply not of adequate size to handle the crowds there. And we hear reports of people having to stand in line to use the restroom for almost an entire period of a hockey game, which really dilutes the ability of the fans to appreciate the game and probably cuts down on beer sales because if people can't go to the bathroom, they're not going to be drinking beer. So it's, you know, this is one of the things, this is a long-term improvement to that facility. So I've had conversations with the Pueblo Bulls and originally, I think the Parks Department had put eight hundred thousand dollars in for capital improvements at the Ice Arena. We took it out once we signed this contract. But I want to put five hundred thousand dollars back in because my plan is to come back to the city council with an agreement with the Pueblo Bulls after they have the plans drawn up to expand the restroom facilities to say that we will pay for sixty percent of that expense and they'll pay for forty percent of that expense. They estimate the expense to be about eight hundred thousand dollars to add, I think. And I'm going by memory now, two or three stalls, maybe four stalls to the women's facility, couple of stalls to the men's facility so that they have more capacity to. Those restrooms simply weren't built for crowds of this size. So we've added five hundred thousand dollars into the capital improvement budget that wasn't there before the last time you saw it. And we've also added an increase for the Parks and Recreation Department in the amount of eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars. This is for sponsorships basically that they bring in. And they want the ability to spend that money that they bring in for sponsorships. So that's sort of what's been estimated there. They've got a pot of money that they put this into and they've never spent all that money in every year. So we originally had said, we're not going to allow that extra eighteen thousand, one fifty because you haven't spent it in the years past anyway. But they prevailed upon us that let's put it in the budget and if we don't spend it, it'll just go back into the general fund. So that's we we've made that adjustment for them. This was a big deal for the employees over there, I think, who go out and sponsor, who solicit these sponsorships for for some of the events that they have. So we've added that there. So one other thing I wanted to talk about while we're on the summary of changes and I'll turn it over to Laura and she can go through the slideshow is that we haven't changed the B one. But one of the things we've agreed to, and you'll see it on your salary ordinance, it will come at the end of the year, is in an effort to attract more police officers, we've agreed to increase the starting pay for a first or entry level police officer by five hundred dollars a month. This is not something that we have to negotiate with the union about. Chief Noler and HR believe that this could have an effect on our ability to attract more police officers. You've all heard that we're having a difficult time getting people to apply to be police officers. They say this might be one of the ways. You recall that we're giving everybody in the police department, all the officers, a seven percent across the board increase. In addition to that seven percent across the board increase for the starting police officers, we're increasing that by five hundred dollars a month. That won't affect anybody up above them. We don't have to make any adjustments there, but it'll just be some added dollars. So it's not an increase in the budget for two thousand and twenty three because we think that will be paid for out of salary savings. But I wanted you to be aware that that you're going to be seeing that salary ordinance and that change will come. Councilor.
What's the starting salary for entry level police officer now?
I don't know. It's about forty three hundred dollars a month. This would increase it to forty eight. Thousand dollar gap between starting and the next step.
And how does that compare to other cities that we comparable to? Are we catching up?
Well, we're catching up. Obviously, if we had the five hundred dollars, there would there'd probably be other cities that are paying more.
Yeah.
But you know, we we think this is a good step. And I I've explained to others I I think you know as well, but because I think we did pass, this was amendment to the collective bargaining agreement earlier this year for in police officers that transfer from another department, experienced police officers, we'll let them come in with up to five years of experience. And instead of starting at the entry level, we'll let them start at the level that they had at that other department. So if they have three years of experience, they can start at step three rather than step one. So we're again hoping that that will encourage some of those kind of things as well.
My my thinking is that our police officers should be paid at the level comparable to other cities parity, if that's what you want to call it, because the things that they go through here in Pueblo are the same things that they go through in Denver, Colorado Springs and everything themselves. So the the dangers, the workload, the everything.
The the target we've used for comparable and comparison in the cities we compare with is eighty five percent of what they get. And that's because the cost of living historically has been less than it is in some of those comparable cities. So.
That's fading too. So.
It's fading and we'll obviously keep evaluating that. Maybe we have to go up to ninety or ninety five percent of that in order to be competitive.
I think so too.
We're going to work in those directions, obviously, because we all want nothing more than to fill out the police force with qualified individuals. So.
We want the best police force we can possibly pay for.
For how many months?
Pardon me?
For how many months is the five hundred dollars a month? Increase?
It's forever.
Oh, forever.
Yeah. So this is their starting pay will be increased by five hundred dollars a month.
Okay. And then can you go back to real story, Mayor, for the Parks and Rec increase?
Yep.
Can you talk more about that for the sponsorship? Is that?
Eighteenth, Laura, you want to?
I can. So the the city, there's Parks and Rec staff that for things like, let's see, movies in the park, they go find a sponsorship for, and the sponsors might provide a T-shirt or a cap or a water bottle or whatnot. But they also pay a fee to the Parks and Rec Department. And in two thousand and twenty two, they collected nearly twenty thousand dollars. Well, there's no opportunity to use those resources in two thousand and twenty two. So they're asking for and budgeted in two thousand and twenty three. This is what they'd like to do with those funds. Used to replace needed equipment such as a new screen and a trailer wrap for the popular movies in the park program, promotional equipment for marketing, new speakers and a P A system for the city park rides that and these are the result, you know, there are sponsorships that sponsor those kiddie rides. And this eighteen thousand, one hundred and fifty dollars, I think it is, yes, is what they planned out of the twenty thousand dollars that they could utilize in two thousand and twenty three.
But they already have the twenty thousand dollars?
They collected it in two thousand and twenty two.
And this eighteen thousand is in addition to that twenty thousand?
Well, the eighteen thousand is the expenditure out of those resources. So if you're a sponsor of movies in the park, you know, your your propensity to re-sponsor next year would rely some on what did you do with last year's sponsorship?
Okay.
And what they will do with last year's sponsorship is rewrap the the trailer and have a new screen. So they're they're utilizing them, but it's really a year delay because of the way the sponsorship resources come in.
Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
Okay. Do you want to go through the rest of the?
So Chief, how many hours of overtime does every police officer make or an average?
Chief, come up here so you're on the record.
Because I know I know that cops love love overtime, nurses do too. Yeah.
I don't know that I could give you any specific numbers. There's there's a lot of overtime that's working right now. You know, with the manpower shortage that there's a lot of opportunity if they're looking to make money through overtime to do that.
So like an entry level person, what do they what do they average an ear with their OT?
Entry level people are are not allowed on probation to apply for certain overtime positions, just so just so you know that upfront. But usually in the academy, they get zero overtime.
Okay.
Usually in the PTO program, when they're out in the field and in that training phase, they they probably get quite a bit of overtime. And then depending on how the schedule works through the rest of the year, once they're out on their own, there there is opportunity to work overtime, but for at least twenty six weeks of their of their first year, they're not authorized.
I would doubt that a a police officer has eight hour days.
They work four ten-hour shifts.
Right.
And then they're usually.
I mean, so ten hours is probably more like twelve hours, twelve, fourteen hours. Yeah. So speaking of training, we had a conversation during our retreat and you. retreat and you had said that you don't accept training, say, from another community college. They have to be, they have to go through your training.
If they're not already a officer, a lateral transfer, yes, ma'am, they go through our academy.
Okay. But do other cities, you know, take, say, if say, if somebody went to a community college in Colorado Springs and they're certified in being a police officer, that means nothing to you?
I don't know that it means nothing to me, but we have our own in-house academy like several other departments in the state of Colorado do.
Okay.
Part of part of the onboarding of police personnel is to inculcate our culture into those individuals.
Okay.
The academy allows us the opportunity.
I get that. Does every city?
We can make sure.
Does every city do that?
Does every single city do that?
Okay. I'm just wondering because, you know, say, if you're a nurse, I mean, I'm able to work in every state. I don't have to take another test in another state. I'm just wondering why, why? I mean, isn't there standards that they have at community colleges to become a police officer?
There are some standards at a community college, yes, ma'am. They are not our standards.
Okay.
And I think, given the type of department that we want in our community, the professionalism that we want in our community, we have to start by having those officers go through our academy process so that they learn our culture and what are our acceptable norms in our organization. That's twenty-six weeks where we get to do that. In this day and age, there's, I have nothing against a cat academy at the community college. I went to Pike's Peak Community Colleges Academy. But what I'm telling you is that in this day and age, with the scrutiny that we're going under as a profession, to have that twenty-six week period where we can teach those officers how we do things in Pueblo, not how whatever instructor they had at the community college thinks they they should do things, how we do them. It's vitally important. I don't know that there's a profession on the planet that undergoes the scrutiny that we do. And I don't think that the repercussions of decision making at our at our profession are are really matched anywhere else. I mean, you're talking about giving a twenty-one-year-old kid a firearm and sending him out in a car by themselves to go do things. It's important that we teach them the standards that we want at our organization, the professionalism that we want and what our community wants out of its cops.
And then you had said that several cops don't pass the physical test? Not cops, not cops, but like applicants?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. How many current, like currently, how many cops that are currently employed? How many of them could pass the physical test?
I have no idea. We don't require a physical test after you after you're hired.
So once you're hired, then you can blimp out. Yeah, that's what I'm asking. So how important is that physical test if you're if you're, you know, if if it doesn't matter after that?
I think it's important that you meet a standard when you're going to go through a police academy that requires physical training.
And then, but afterwards, it doesn't matter.
You want me to answer the question?
I do. I do want I do want you to answer that.
It's important that our officers meet a standard when they come in. Our police academy is twenty-six weeks long. There are physical requirements during that academy. If we allowed them into the academy and they can't pass that simple test, it is not a difficult test. That that they should be able to pass that test. It's something we have done. I think it's been in place like ten years. When I applied in nineteen ninety-six, I had to pass a physical agility test. There was a period of time where we didn't have that test. The number of candidates I think that we lose through that test is statistically insignificant. It's not the reason why we're not getting cops.
Oh, you had just brought it up one time about that.
But I I guess that that's what I'm assuming you're where you're going.
Well, it's just, I'm just curious. I mean, you know, my father was an engineer with the Forest Service and he would get overtime to go to a fire and he had to take a physical test every single year. He had to stay in really great shape because he wanted that overtime.
Right. We don't have a requirement. There would have to be negotiations with the union in order for us to have a physical agility test that each officer would have to pass on a
I just find it interesting. Okay, I think that's all I had.
I forgot what the original question was.
Okay, well, with your, I'm going to go through the packet. It's not quite to the slide deck, but your packet, because there was so much information in there. It's your packet to move forward with, and it is numbered if we want to stop on any any one of the the pages with questions. So moving on to page number two, this is thank you to Alex, Anna and Bree. And I think I have phoned a friend, either Anna or our Bree or both on the screen. If you have any questions, they're on Zoom. But on page two then is with the changes proposed on page one, there is a full new B one in front of you. And the highlights are the areas on page number one that are now implemented into page number two from the previous B one. And I think it's noteworthy only to stop on the fact that in twenty twenty-two, where you get towards the bottom one-third of the page, under ending fund balance, it we were estimated to close fist of calendar year twenty twenty-two with a fifty-four million nine hundred and nine thousand five hundred and forty-nine fund balance. And of that balance, then moving into twenty twenty-three with a proposed budget in front of you, sixteen million eight hundred and sixty-two thousand would become a decrease in fund balance that would result in the proposed budget with a fund balance of thirty-eight million and forty-nine thousand two hundred and ninety. And then the other couple of items to look at there are the table reserves as required. And then also council designated reserve, you can see its trajectory and its pathway and trend moving from twenty twenty of nine million and the moving back to a to a twelve percent of expenditure authorization of to sixteen million at the twenty twenty-three proposed budget that further reduces the fund balance that is for future appropriation to eighteen million four hundred and seventeen thousand. And that's what the newly designed B one would look like with all the proposes that proposed changes that have been before you this evening. On on page number three is the moving on to the non-departmental contractual payments that were proposed to change and you see the highlighted twenty thousand for VITA rather than fifteen. And also the putting back in where we didn't have originally the Pueblo Economic Dashboard, and those are the last three items on the list on the right-hand column. And then also I want to mention that the nine hundred and fifty thousand dollars for the Greater Chamber is included in the proposed budget in this evening's numbers. On page number four, move on to the contributions and donations of the non-departmental and seeing in the yellow highlighted areas in the right-hand column, the confirmation that the Latino chambers moved from the twenty-five thousand to the hundred thousand at the at the direction of city council. And that Sangre de Cristo Art Center is moved from its two hundred and fifty back to the three hundred thousand that was equal to last year. So those two changes are accounted for on page four. And on page five, you have to look at the previous one, but this transfers to other funds does confirm that the halfway through that line item list on the right-hand column, the capital improvement fund did increase by five hundred thousand dollars to account for the the bathroom remodel remodel at the Ice Arena. So it's a full twenty-two million two hundred and sixty-six thousand three hundred and eleven dollar investment in the capital improvement fund for the twenty twenty-three budget. And that's page five changes. On page number six, you can see which will become which will show in the final budget on the back of it. Now there are the back pages towards the bottom one-fourth of the page, the addition of the Ice Arena restroom and concession expansion of five hundred thousand. And it really is only restroom. This was the title of of before. There's not concession expansion in there. Is there? It's just restroom. Oh, not not concession. And that's the only change to page six. And on page seven, for just easier communication to the user of the budget, one-fourth way from the up from the bottom, the street rehabilitation has now been included on only one line under the general fund, you can see the seven million five hundred thousand dollars of the ten million coming from the general fund. And in the right-hand column, two point five million towards of street rehab for twenty twenty-three coming from the H U T F or the Highway User Tax Fee. So easier for the user not to have to hunt all over to find the city council's approval of ten million dollars for street rehabilitation in in twenty twenty-three. That's the page seven confirmation. On page number eight is just the copy of the Parks and Rec operating funds, but you don't see the eighteen thousand till you turn to the next page and it is just included. This might be the difference in in line item budget versus one-day program budget, but the presentation always must be in a line item that it is the highlighted yellow two hundred and fifteen thousand seven hundred and forty. And if there's any questions or discussion or other items that city council would like to bring, look, I think that Alex has her computer up. We're ready to take any other changes and they would be really requesting final changes as I think you have the first ordinance ready to go with these changes. And that will be on the agenda next Monday evening.
For first reading?
For first reading.
Okay. What questions are there from council? Thanks, Alex. Thanks, Maslano. Counselor Flores.
You know, we had the conversation regarding the improvement of our government TV channel. And, you know, it it sounds to me like you have a plan going forward. I had thought, which was ironic, because I've been thinking about this for a while, and I know you guys have discussed that of improving our our Comcast channel. But I I was, I had thought about potentially putting some money in there for the hiring of a consultant that could that could lead us in the right direction, but you thought that there would be somebody internal that would be able to do that. And if that's the case, but I I would have liked to have seen some money in the budget to actually hire a professional consultant. But if you think you have that under control and we we have the resources internally for somebody to walk us through that, then I would I would wouldn't require that we had anything in there.
Yeah, we're in the early stages of that. We had a discussion today about the fees we get from Comcast to support those public channels. So we're going to work in that direction, but we're in preliminary discussions about updating the content there, what do we need to do there? And if it turns out that we don't think we have the capacity internally to generate that content or to create that content, we'll come back to the council and say, hey, we'd like to have this position or we'd like to have this kind of a contract to help us get that. Because that's a tremendous asset for the community and I agree with you. I don't think we're using it to the extent that that we can or that we should in terms of communicating information about what's going on in the government and what's going on in the community. So.
So there would be resources somewhere if we if we needed to halfway.
We believe, yeah, we could.
Okay, thank you.
Counselor Warner?
You know, I just, chief, I just wanted to go back to that kind of agility test. What I was getting at with that is that you had mentioned before that people that make it through civil service and they make it through H R and they make it through all these steps and then they don't pass that agility test. I was just asking, like, what difference does it make if it doesn't mean anything after that? I mean, it came out kind of harsh, but that's where I was going. Because I was just, I it just kind of shocks me. There was somebody in the media that took the physical test and he said there were quite a few of those that could not pass. So if you're looking at five, five men that would be great cops, but they didn't pass that agility test, what difference does it make if if two months from now you can't pass it?
I I don't know how to, maybe maybe what we should do is have you come look at our academy and what they have to do during the academy in order.
No, what I'm getting at is getting more police officers on quick more more quickly.
There's no
Because you know, we talked about.
Ma'am, there's nobody in this room that wants more officers.
Right, right. But we were taught, we had talked about all the steps because it takes several months to even get to that agility test. So I'm just trying to figure out how another another step that maybe.
The agility, the timing of the agility test is the same day normally as the written exam. So they'll take the the physical agility test. If they don't pass that, they don't move on to the written exam.
Okay.
And then the, what's that? Correct.
Right.
So the the
What difference does it make? What difference does it make like a year from now if they can't pass the test? What difference does it make? That's what that's my, that's my question.
The idea of it is to make sure that they're physically prepared for the police academy where they're having to do defensive tactics, firearms, training, run and meet other standards that are required not only by post, but the organization. The other idea is that what we don't want is an officer who twenty-five years into their career doesn't have any kind of basis for for a healthy living and healthy lifestyle. Part of the process that that has been discovered in our profession through time is that much like nursing or being a doctor in the E R, the stress levels of that are extremely high. And if we don't have people that can physically do physical activity and we teach them wellness during the academy, they're already at a deficit before they even begin. We've had in the past officers that we have hired, they couldn't do a push-up. That officer is not going to be successful throughout their twenty twenty-five year career. There's going to be other issues that are involved as well, not just health issues. There's going to be mental wellness issues. There's going to be other things. They're not going to be able to defend themselves in a fight. The idea is to bring them in at a specific level of physical readiness and then try to expand that through the academy so that they are well through their twenty twenty-five year career. You know, the the ideally, would we have to pass a physical agility test every year? Yeah, ideally, in a in a union environment, there's negotiations that would have to go on in order to make that happen. When we normed that test, we took different age groups, different we had males and females from the organization do the the physical fitness test. The norming is what averaged out the the time requirement. And I'd like to point out that we've had multiple reporters, some of whom were not in that great a shape. And certainly none of certainly none of whom wanted to be police officers successfully complete that physical agility test.
Right, right. I don't want to get hung up on that. I'm just saying that what difference does it make? I mean, there's probably what twenty percent of your cops right now that could pass it?
Others, I think there, I think you're not giving my cops enough credit to be, to be honest.
Maybe, I don't, I don't know.
I do have a question about the budget, just to go back to the agenda item. Can you please explain to me, Ms. Solano, I know that we've talked about this before, what the council designated reserve is appropriated for or like what what's that reserved for?
I I don't have the history. I only have my four years of employment history, which is to say that in the last four years, council has not approved any distributions out of the a reserve that council maintains. I do know that prior to the four years, as as the budget allowed, the percentage to contribute to that balance has gone from from twelve percent down to ten. We were able to two years ago move it back up to twelve. But for some history, we could ask Anna.
That I think in any governmental organization, you have the board or the the governing body say it's good fiscal practice to keep a certain percentage of the income in reserve. What that is is up to the council, obviously. Sometimes it's been ten percent here. It's twelve percent is what it's listed here. Doesn't have to be twelve percent. That's if money we could use in the event all of our sales tax would come in and we needed money somewhere. So that's sort of a rainy day fund, call it that, I guess. Anna, do you have any history on it?
I I'm sorry, I don't have any history on it, but I completely agree with what you said, mayor. I believe it's a rainy day fund that council can increase or decrease depending on what they believe the reserve should be. And it has been lower, I believe, one year it was even as low as eight percent when our revenues weren't as high, but twelve is the highest I've seen it.
And obviously, the table reserve is one where it's constitutionally mandated to set. So.
Yeah, I was just curious. I know about the table. I just curious how the council designated. That helps. Um, did you have anything? Okay, great. Counselor Graham, any other questions as it pertains to this budget? Questions or comments for this specifically for this budget? Then I really appreciate all the hard work. I know, Alex, you've come in and a
We have the slide deck to finish that, Counselor Flores, I'm so sorry, and I'll run through it quickly unless you'd like for me to wait. He asked a specific question about some history with vendor fees.
We can wait if you guys.
But and but I can go through it quickly if you pull the PowerPoint back up. I'll take your direction. Do we even, I'm going to give you two minutes, Maslano. I can do it in one and a half.
Okay, let's get the timeout timer clerk, the the timer. I'm just kidding.
Can you make it screen? So let
But really, I, I really do appreciate the, the hard work that it did to, to come up with this budget. I know it's a team effort. I wanted to just shout out the finance department and especially with Alex coming on. So quickly, great job, hard work. Kudos to the finance department.
I have to subtract that from my two minutes.
No, it wasn't pressed yet because clerk didn't press the time.
Okay, go. Uh, uh, so um, councillor Flores asked for a timeline and uh, maybe a process for vendor fees. And so this slide shows you that the voters approved in nineteen eighty three the pledge uh, for vendors for fee for convert, um, convention center for the bonds. In twenty thousand five, they were financed to a lower rate. In twenty ten, they actually approved uh, the Memorial Hall and the Convention Center together. In twenty eleven, the series double um, A and B bonds were issued um, and refinanced in twenty, from the twenty five bonds. In twenty six, six, sixteen, the series A bonds were paid off and began the series B bonds. And in twenty uh, twenty, the sixteen uh, bonds uh, were refinanced to a lower interest rate. On the next slide, which is in front of you, there's a list of the process. City count, uh, the city finance department collects the sales tax returns. They calculate the vendor fee. Uh, you see it every month on your sales tax report. In the column, it just does not show that it's three point three percent of the business taxes collected and finance goes through that. The city finance department makes the payment over to U M B Bank. On a monthly basis, U M B Bank processes the payment for the city of Pueblo. It makes the deposits that are required for the debt service payment of the bonds. And it ensures that the urban renewal follows the budget set by resolution each year. And I mean, city council resolution, that's to come next month. Uh, from urban renewals perspective, they ensure that the debt payments are made. The monthly management fee is for the convention center. They process the request for memorial hall maintenance and they will be here next month to answer any of your questions. The next slide shows you the different, the collections in twenty twenty one that they actually receive and prepare their budget on for twenty twenty two. And you see the current vendor fees to date that coincides with the amount on your uh, the last sales tax um, report that the mayor sent out to you a couple of days ago. It is a six point three percent up in September and an overall increase year to date of five point eight. And the next slide shows you from last year's urban renewal budget um, that they prepared a budget and they proposed a budget to city council that totals two million nine hundred and eighteen thousand four hundred and thirty nine dollars. And the expenditure align items, um, you can see the sixteen thousand, the operations and maintenance subsidy. That is just, they, it's a pass-through to the convention center. The amount varies monthly depending on the activity at the convention center. The asset management fee of two hundred and fifty thousand is actually the amount of the vendor fees paid to urban renewal to manage the convention center. It equals twenty thousand eight hundred and thirty three uh, dollars uh, roughly per month. Of the other expenditures, if you add both the principal payment and the interest payment, it is for the last um, series B bonds that you saw on the two previous slides. The total equal eight hundred and eighty six thousand four hundred and sixty two dollars and fifty cents. They also collect out of these vendor fees and utilize uh, to be determined as T B D capital expenditures of seven hundred and eighty thousand two hundred and fourteen. And it is used depending on the capital expenditures needed at the convention center, roof repair, H VAC, A D, on whatever those fees are. And then they, they put a small amount into a redemption account in the event that there's opportunity to redeem those bonds early. And that concludes the, the slide deck. Thank you.
Good job, Ms. Solano. No, you're a minute and eighteen seconds over. Yeah. Um, any questions or comments? That really was actually very helpful. Is councillor Flores? Other thoughts and comments? Great. Seeing none, I conclude this work session at eight oh three.